So, calling the Extraniorary Council meeting, apologies for absence. Are there any apologies for absence? Sorry, councillor Smith.
Again, apologies for councillor Callaghan.
Councillor Callaghan is absent and sends his apologies. Thank you. Anyone else? Declarations of interest. Are there any declarations of interest? Yes.
I declare a non-procune interest as an employee of Essex Partnership University NHS Foundation Trust.
Thank you. Is that noted? Any other declarations of interest? Councillor Smith.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Just a friendly word of advice. Could you give us all general dispensation because we're all users of the NHS, please?
I don't think that's necessary. Any other declarations of interest? Councillor Henry.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I sit on the council of governors at the Mid and South Essex Hospital Trust.
Thank you. Councillor Mackenzie.
I am due to be appointed as a board member of the local clinical commissioning group and as a governor of the North East London NHS Trust.
Thank you. Are there any other declarations of interest? Thank you. There are no announcements unless there's any announcements from a leader. Any announcements from any committee chair? Are there any? Councillor Rimmer, can you limit it please to two minutes?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. It was obviously, I've already met with director Paul Brace in respect of the programme that we will have for the committee and in respect of that we will obviously be looking at leisure and sports and how to make people more active, more healthy and living longer, healthier lives. We'll be looking at a waste strategy that would be compliant with the Environment Bill and we will actually be looking at tackling climate change to actually meet our targets for 2035 and 2050. So it is going to be a full programme. Get your seatbelts on. Thank you very much.
Any other committee chairman wish to make an announcement? The chief executive, any announcements? No. I'm now moving to item four, freedom of entry to the borough NHS organisations. We have a report from the chief executives which has been published and circulated to all members. It's my understanding and with agreement between councillor Baggett and councillor Ferguson, both being leaders of one prospective groups, leader of the council, that councillor Baggett is going to propose and councillor Ferguson is going to second. Councillor Baggett, you have 10 minutes, up to 10 minutes, and councillor Ferguson, you have up to five minutes. So I'll ask councillor Baggett to speak to the item, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Some of you may be aware that on the first of February I had the opportunity to visit Basildon Hospital for nearly three weeks. And over that three weeks, it was quite amazing, what I discovered, to be honest. What you had was you had hard working nurses coming in day by day, risking themselves with masks and working under the threat of a pandemic, putting up with abuse from patients, sometimes warranted, sometimes maybe unwarranted with regard to the pain they were in. We saw people working 12 hours a day on shift, going home, literally going home, going to bed, coming back the next day. I spoke to a number of them that had been working for two to three weeks constantly without a break and yet every single one of them came in with a smile and a real passion and concern for the people that were under their care. And I believe that that experience in the pastor ward of Basildon Hospital wasn't something that was unique but something that was replicated across this borough, where you had good, hardworking, local people putting themselves at risk in order to provide succor and ease to those in need of it. And that sort of dedication, sorry, that sort of dedication means that I am absolutely 100% behind the idea of giving the freedom of the borough to the NHS organisations as laid out in the report. I only wish that we could do more because what I saw was a real core of humanity, of people putting themselves out for the betterment of the people that they were there to serve. And that should be a lesson to us as well in public office. I think that absolutely heroes want it all and I'm absolutely supporting this paper. Thank you.
Councillor Jack Ferguson.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Before I begin my speech, may I first of all say on behalf of my group how pleased I am to see councillor Baggett making a full recovery from the incident that took place earlier this year. Thank you to all those that supported him during that time on behalf of my group and it's great to see you here this evening. I'm proud to second this motion tonight and completely echo the comments of councillor Baggett. Our NHS workers are our heroes. They fight day and night to give us the best care that they possibly can, working through some of the most challenging of conditions. And I'd also like to thank the administration for continuing the, allowing this motion to come forward this evening after our resolution that we brought forward in the March meeting. For 73 years, the NHS has served us no matter what. It is a national institution that is driven by the most dedicated staff who go above and beyond the line of duty. The sacrifices that they've made over many years is second to none. They've gone above and beyond the call of duty in so many difficult circumstances and particularly over the last 12 months. The work that we see our doctors and nurses do on the front line, the heroes that we don't see on the front line in the administrative staff that support them no matter what. Without them, we all wouldn't be here. The staff that work in mental health services, and it's really important that we start to see parity of esteem in mental health services as well within our NHS, always going above and beyond the call of duty to support all individuals and particularly at these times that we've seen. Our NHS staff are an absolute inspiration to all of us. They're an example to us all of how we should be and the public service that we should commit. Last year, we clapped for our NHS workers every Thursday night, bringing communities together, for some of us the first opportunity to meet our neighbours as well. And who couldn't fail to be inspired by the NHS workers at Basildon Hospital when they, during the most challenging situations, during the most difficult times during the pandemic in March last year, filmed a video of the NHS nurses dancing, trying to keep and trying to lift spirits of all of us at a really challenging time. And when we think of the NHS, we think of our heroes, we think of all those that have supported us, but it's always those personal stories that we think about when we consider our NHS. And I'd like to consider mine. This September will mark five years since, within a 10 day period, I'd lost my grandmother after a long battle with dementia and my father suffered a heart attack within a 10 day period. And as I bounced from hospital floor to hospital floor, all I could see each day and night that I was there was the sheer dedication of those staff going above and beyond the call of duty at all times, giving my father the care that he needed and thankfully he did make a full recovery, and the care that my grandmother needed in her final days. On behalf of me and my family, thank you to all those NHS workers that did all they could for my family. And on behalf of my party and my group, thank you to all those in our NHS, thank you to all those within the Basildon and Brentwood Clinical Commissioning Group, Mid and South Essex NHS Foundation Trust, North East London Foundation Trust and the Essex Partnership University Foundation Trust. Councillor Baggett's right, this should be the start of what we do to support our NHS workers. I'm proud that we're giving them freedom of the borough this evening, but we must and we should do a lot more. Thank you.
Before I call other members, are there any other group leaders that wish to speak? So councillor Smith. Councillor Smith, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. This is a very important issue. I'm glad an incoming administration has decided to run with it. This is not a political issue. These are residents who work in the NHS who we represent. And my ward of Nevermain, which I'm joined by councillor Ketter and recently councillor Green, we have Men H, sorry about this. Is that better, members? It's terrible, this signal. Right, I think it's set off. Sorry, Mr Mayor. And we have the privilege to represent as board councillors for Nevermain, many of the frontline NHS staff, the ones who you might say get their hands dirty, be it from the nurses to the cleaners and doctors starting out in their medical career. And what we've seen with Covid is that the NHS go to places it's never been asked or expected to go to before. We've all seen quite recently the news of my mother's passing. She was, they actually knew in February, her bowel cancer had hit her liver, but because of all the pressures with Covid, it just slipped through the net. And I'm not seeking some sort of victimhood status. It makes me wonder how many other people have slipped through the net. We read these stories in the paper and it's not the fault of the NHS staff. This is the fault of Covid. I want to be clear on that though because this is not a political point. It's a statement of fact. And you read these tragic stories of young people in their prime of their lives, having very treatable cancers and it's slipped through. What I'm trying to say, Mr Mayor, and to members here tonight, is that, okay, we're getting close to beating Covid with the vaccine, but, but, but NHS waiting list needs to be addressed. And to do that, it's not just a case of money, it's not just a case of speeches in Parliament, it's a case of excellent, hardworking staff of all ranks and pay grade who go to work every single day to make our hospital what it is. And I don't envy their task in hand. And as an elected member of this council, it is a very, very small thing for me to do to support this award for our NHS. It is the very least we can do. And just one other final point, my door as the former chairman of the Housing and Communities Committee, we had a scheme with Sempra which you and I councillor Dadd, when you sat in my committee, spoke about quite robustly about trying to build more key worker housing. I am very happy to work with the administration to carry on that work because to give the best NHS workers, we need to help them get their houses. But that's a debate for another day, Mr Mayor. It would be remiss of me not to say that. Thank you, Mr Mayor, and thank you to councillor Baggett and his group for not making this a political thing. It is appreciated.
Thank you. Councillor Harrison.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. The NHS is something I think a lot of people take for granted. It's something which will always be there. And it's only at times like this, perhaps in the last 18, well 12, 15 months, we realise how much we rely on the NHS. I mean, there's quite a few people here probably been involved and had good treatment from the NHS over recent years. I have personally and from councillor Baggett's point of view, had a similar experience. And you see how dedicated the staff are in Basildon Hospital. I think this award is so thoroughly deserved. There's quite some, there's some people who always criticise the NHS, but that will happen. But the staff and these organisations who represent the staff thoroughly deserve to have the freedom of this borough. I hope, as councillor Baggett has indicated, I think, locally in the press, that in some way we can do a little bit more to recognise it in the near future because that needs to be done. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, Harrison. Councillor Sargent.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and congratulations on your becoming the mayor and to councillor Mackenzie for becoming deputy. The NHS has always provided an excellent service to residents of the borough. In fact, a service one could say at one time was taken for granted even, though it must be one of the most dependent public services in the country. Health is a key priority. Then came along the Covid pandemic, which completely changed the delivery of the health service and our views of it. The reaction of the NHS to the pandemic will be etched on our minds forever. We saw sheer determination, frustration, fatigue from staff of all levels fighting to overcome this dreadful virus that had caught us all unaware. Although the pandemic must be one of the worst tragedies experienced, it has brought us to understand the complexities faced by the NHS and the barriers it overcomes to save lives. The public realising the tremendous efforts of the NHS came together on a weekly basis to clap with their heartfelt thanks. It also brought out kindness in our communities, many offering help to their neighbours and many signed up as NHS volunteers. The kindness continues with volunteers playing a key role in helping with the distribution of the Covid vaccine. We as a council must capture and hold on to that kindness and capability within our communities who in their small way play a major role. We must recognise the very early development of the Covid vaccine and praise the amazing skill that has brought the pandemic under control more quickly than anticipated. We must also thank the government for successfully delivering the vaccination to millions of people. Many lessons have been learned. NHS, we as a council applaud and thank you in this honourable way to bestow the freedom of entry of the borough to you, which I wholeheartedly support. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor McDonald.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I am very pleased to support this motion. I think as other members have said, this is probably the least we can do for our NHS organisations and partners. I can see how moved councillor Baggett has been over his experience this year and his illness. And having known councillor Baggett through his family for some, some time, I was quite moved as well and I appreciate his sentiments towards this motion. I note that members have said, you know, this is not a political issue and I will endeavour not to get too political, but I think, you know, we can't talk about the NHS without being a little bit political. And one thing I would like to ask is to urge every member and non-member in this chamber to try and get themselves behind a campaign for a minimum 12.5% pay rise for NHS staff. Thank you.
Before, I don't believe there are any other speakers. Before I call, oh sorry, councillor Rimmer.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I think it's very fitting that the freedom of the borough is actually going to the NHS trusts mentioned in this motion. 10 years ago, the Royal Anglian Regiment had the first honour of actually getting freedom of the borough. And only last year, Don Shepherd, who was a veteran of World War Two, was honoured with freedom of the borough. We faced a different war in the last 18 months or so, in terms of Covid and the pandemic. And at the front line were our medical staff, our NHS, and I think we all owe a debt of gratitude to them. But let us also recognise that it's medical workers around the whole world, working for different medical institutions as well, that we all owe a debt of gratitude to because this is a global pandemic. And I think that in honouring the NHS, we're also honouring all, all medical workers as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Before I call councillor Baggett to wind up, I would also like to say that during the Covid emergency, I think we need to also recognise the assistance that we've had from the emergency services as a whole, charities, voluntary organisations, including individuals, business and organisations and workers that have helped our community during this crisis. And I think it is fitting that we give the freedom of entry to the borough to the NHS. Can I call councillor Baggett to wind up, please?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. There was very little that I could find to disagree with any of these speakers and they all hit the right tone with regards to what we're doing here today. If I was lucky enough to have some sort of magic money tree, I did say some six months ago that the ideal would be to be able to provide each NHS worker with something that they could keep as a remembrance of this, something that they could show their grandchildren and say, I was given this for the work that I did during a national pandemic, a global pandemic even, something that they can hold on to and remember. Because while we stand here today and when we put up the plaque that says they have the freedom of the borough, to the nurses that are dealing with patients dying in front of them, to the nurses that are putting hour after hour after hour in, that actual message doesn't necessarily sink through. And it's those very people are the ones that should have some sort of recognition. And if anybody was able to show me a way where they could get that, I would do it in a heartbeat. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
I now will take a vote. The recommendation is set out on page three. Those in favour? It's unanimous. There are no other urgent motions for debate, therefore the meeting is closed. Can I thank all members for the participation? Thank you. Good night.